Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Berniston Elementary School cafeteria in said Berniston the 17th day of June next at seven o'clock in the evening in the year 2019, then and there to act upon the following articles. And there are five articles. The return. You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting up certified attested copies thereof at least 14 days before the time of holding said meeting at the five places within the town listed below. Enlisted are the Berniston Town Hall, the Berniston Post Office, the Country Corner Store, the Berniston Senior Center, and the town website. And I have a return from Kathy Montilio, the constable, that pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Berniston by posting up attested copies of this warrant 14 days before the date of said election as within directed at, and she lists the same five places, and that's dated May 30. So it's my finding that there has been a proper warrant, proper notice. It's now past seven o'clock, and therefore this meeting is properly held. That being the case, I'll ask that you stand, and we'll pledge allegiance to the flag which is directly behind you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. You can be seated. Okay, first, we're going to have a preliminary statement by the town clerk, then there's going to be a preliminary statement by one of the selectmen.
So, as I look around, I don't think there is anyone here who is, except for me and my wife, not a resident of town or a registered voter. Is there anyone else who is not a registered voter or not a resident of town? So make sure you don't see me open my mouth when it comes time to vote, or my wife's. All right? Everybody else, you need to have, to be able to have your franchise, you need to have a wristband. If you do not have a wristband, let me know, come up here, and a single ballot, which is the official secret ballot, should we have a secret ballot vote. Now's the time. You shouldn't have two, only one. You should have one. That's it. Okay. Thank you very much. That's it.
Okay, now we'll have a preliminary statement by the selectman. When you stand during the meeting, I'm going to ask that everybody, in order to speak, you identify yourself, and you list your address, and that you come to the microphone to speak. On behalf of the people who are listening to this and are not present, I am also going to ask anybody at the front table who is going to speak to identify themselves. So you can be the first.
My name is Bob Raymond. I live at 178 Turnus Falls Road. I'm chair of the select board this year, and I'd like to read a statement to everyone in attendance. There's a lot of people. The PVRS district budget has steadily increased assessments to the towns, even as enrollment has significantly decreased. Over the past 12 years, our budget has gone up over $1 million. It's about $100,000 a year. The four town select boards and finance committees have met four times this year as all town leaders are concerned with the school budget. The state had to lend Pioneer about a half a million dollars as the school was running a deficit. The towns had previously agreed to pay the $270,000 lunch deficit, and we made the first payment of $90,000 together last year. All towns are concerned that we have to pay back the rest of the money over a 10-year period with interest. There are three issues that we wish to discuss. The first is with the closing of Pearl Roads Elementary School. The towns wanted the savings of $188,000, which is what was estimated to be saved by the closing of that school to go back to the towns. The superintendent and school committee spent $141,000 of that $188,000 and gave back $47,000 and change to the towns to reduce our assessments. In Article II, we will adjust the school's asking figure down considering that $141,000 in each town's share. Leiden citizens wonder why they allowed their school to close, saving only $47,000. It is no wonder that Warwick is fighting to keep their school open with such little savings from the Leiden school closing. The second issue we have is with the five-year contract given to our new superintendent with such little experience as a superintendent. The State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education wrote our superintendent an email suggesting that he asked the school committee to renegotiate his contract to a shorter length and less percent raises. He refused to do this. This contract was negotiated two days before the state gave Pioneer the loan of about a half a million dollars, and to quote one of our school committee members, "The contract was done two days before the state came in, and the towns can't do a damn thing about it." The select boards and finance committees feel this contract with benefits is worth about $750,000. Again, it doesn't have anything to do with superintendent's schedule. It has to do with this long-term contract. Ruth Miller was here, people were asking the board of selectmen to get rid of her after a year and a half, pay her, and hire a new superintendent. And now we have a five-year deal which is going to begin next year. The leader, this leads us to the third issue. The towns want the Pioneer Valley Regional School District to think about changes that need to occur in education to lower costs to the towns in the future. A grant paid for a study on the PVRS financial situation, and the conclusion was, if the district does not make significant changes, the school will face a $900,000 deficit in four years. We believe sharing of some personnel, personnel, I'm sorry, needs to begin. Positions like occupational therapists, behavior specialists, physical therapists, payroll employees, HR and technology people, and maybe even superintendents. This is never, there has never been talk to change Pioneer to Turnus Falls High School. There has been talk of maybe joining more towns into a single district to save money. At the present time, all of us believe that the school committee thinks they can go it alone, and they do not need to share anybody or any program. We believe differently. If our school is to exist, we need to somehow start to save money in a significant manner. Otherwise, we're going to be back here arguing about it next year and the year after. The only way we have to control what the school committee does is by how much money we give them to spend. Obviously, we are voting to have a study done with the towns of Turnus Falls and Gill as well, and that's why we have listed these three articles, the first three articles, on the warrant. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now proceed with consideration of the articles. Article I, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $47,282.40 to the Pioneer Valley Regional School District Physical Year 20 Assessment for the first year of a five-year contract for the superintendent of schools, or take any vote or votes in relation thereto. So is there a motion that anyone wishes to make with respect to this article?
No move.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. If you'd stand and step up to the microphone.
I just wanted to ask a question at this point.
Okay, if you can identify yourself.
Yeah, I'm Jack from Berniston. The question I have is that, has the town attorney ruled on the separation of this line item out from the budget? Yes, no?
No.
No. Do you have any grounds for thinking that's legal?
Yes, the town of Warwick's attorney has weighed in and says it is legal.
And you haven't checked with yours, ours?
She's still looking into it.
She's still looking into it. Gray area?
Gray area.
Gray area. Okay. So there's a gray area involved with this. I was told it's not legal. I know the superintendent, superintendent, when he was, voted his contract, it was done at a school committee meeting. All 11 people from the school committees, whose job it is to establish the contract, all 11 people at that meeting voted unanimously to approve that five-year contract for him. Now, I happen to think he's very talented, and I know that his salary is 127, 128, somewhere in that area. The average salary for superintendents in the county is 155, 155,000. He's working 127, 128, no increase the second year, and after the five-year period is up, with his increases that'll be coming along, he'll be earning about 155. By that time, the average will be higher. The guy's a good buy. He's young, he's aggressive, he's well-liked by the kids. It's exactly what we need. And I guess I'll go on to my second point. We should all realize, all of us should realize, that things have changed in the educational world. We are in competition with all other towns for students. The last three years for our school system have been highly problematic. There has been a toxic environment at the high school. I don't know how many of you know that, but it is true. And as a result, a lot of kids have left our school and gone down to other places. I was out to dinner the other night with my wife, and we were on our way out, and someone hailed me and said, "Hi, he's a professor at Greenfield Community College. His wife teaches science at Greenfield High School." And she said to me, "We follow what's been going on at Pioneer very closely, and you have our sympathy." And she said, "I love the Pioneer students that I have in my class at Greenfield High School in my science class. I love them." I had to smile, and I kind of said jokingly, "And we want them back," okay? But we're not going to get them back if we continually have a discussion in newspapers about the viability of education in this area. What we need to do is send a message tonight that we firmly support it, and I know the numbers that are being talked about don't relate to all of us, okay? But we need to send a message tonight that we're in support of the education system, and we need to stop this drain of students out of our institution because it's all going to cost us money, more money ultimately. And if you're concerned about dollars, you want to stop that drain of students. So, anyway.
Thank you.
But the point is that it's not entirely certain that this is legal.
Not illegal.
Okay.
Over here, Steve. Over.
My name is Stephen Neston Power. I live at 10 Dewey Street. I do not want to appear to be disputatious with the last speaker, but he quoted a figure of $155,000 average. Our superintendent has no experience other than the 11 months he's been on the job now. The superintendents who are earning $155,000 have been superintendent for years. Most superintendents are cooperative with their towns, with their school boards. Our superintendent, in response to our inquiries to DESI, has clammed up and threatened us with legal representation. We've invited him to ultimate meetings. I'm on the finance committee. We've invited him to joint meetings with the four towns. We've asked him to come to address Berniston's joint select board finance committee. He's refused. It's not about personalities. It's about two things. Is it right, and can we afford it? Berniston is an aging town. Our population is decreasing. The majority of us are on fixed incomes, and we have a decreasing student population. At one of the school committee meetings, our superintendent's solution was to bulk up choice in students. We get $5,000 for that. If you look at the statistics, if you go on DESI, you'll see that the average cost to educating a student in our town is 12, a little over 12,000. Ergo, every time we accept a student, we're losing 7,000, approximately $7,000. Second point, it has nothing to do with whether he's good, bad, or indifferent. I believe that we, as a town, along with the other three towns, have to face what the rational situation is, and bottom line, what can we afford? Since I've been in this, I've lived here five years, and I know Jane is going to dispute it, but my taxes have gone up between $75 and $100 a month. Now, we're one of the highest taxed communities in the state, in the county of Franklin. What are we going to draw in? So please, when you think about, when you're asked to vote, don't make this personal. He might be a great guy, dah 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 dah. Think of what's right, and most important, what we as a community can afford. And people resent every year increases, whether it be $5, or $10, or $20 a month. That's less discretionary money you have to spend. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. And then you're next.
Mike Townsend, 290 Broward Road, Berniston. I'd like to start by saying that it's not about, it isn't about personalities, it's about business. And we're looking at a $14 million-plus business here, and we've got the lowest-paid superintendent in the state. And that's official. The other day, he is the lowest paid in the state. Now granted, the student population is down, so maybe you can look at it that way, that he doesn't need as much money. But if you want somebody to run your business that's $14 million-plus, and he's getting paid $20,000 less than the closest person that runs superintendent's job in the county, I kind of wonder why John even took the contract, myself, but he wants to be here. He wants to make changes. He's doing a good job, and nobody's disputing that. They're disputing what the school committee made a decision on, and that was to give him the five-year contract. So when you look at it as a business, it's a 14-plus, $14 million-plus business, and you've got somebody that's making $127,000 a year to run it, and the next closest in the county is 147. So when you vote, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes. No, right in the second row. This is.
My heart is pounding, so I hope I don't forget what I was going to say.
Start with the easy one. Give your name.
Okay. My name is Karen Fitzpatrick, and I was on the school board for 13 years, probably about 13 years ago, and I have been following what's been going on with Pioneer. I am a zealous advocate of education, but I have to say I have been thoroughly disgusted with the actions of the current school committee, and especially with the five-year contract. After what this district has been through the past several years to award a five-year contract to somebody that's new, and why five years? I'd like to hear more about why five years. I just, I think it's absurd, and I think it's fiscally irresponsible.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the third row.
I'm Patty Zalborsky, 100 South Street in Berniston, and I'm the retired superintendent of the Franklin County Tech School, and the retired superintendent of the Hinsdale, New Hampshire School District. And I want to speak to the five-year contract issue. I don't know John, and he, from what I read, is doing a fine job, and as many have said, that is not the issue. The issue is it's highly, highly unlikely that a new person gets a five-year contract. I was in education for 50 years, and I finally got a three-year contract on my way out. It's about proving yourself in the position, and he may do that. But there are pitfalls should he not live up to the expectations of the job. I have been in two situations at Franklin County Tech where superintendents who didn't fulfill their responsibilities were bought out. Their contracts were very expensive to buy out. You don't want to buy out a contract of a superintendent who does not fulfill your expectations. The second thing is that if you're looking to share positions, and maybe even ultimately a superintendent, if you've got a superintendent locked into a five-year contract, you very well are going to have some legal issues in getting out of it. So that's my two cents worth for the experience that I've had over many years, and I'd do it again in a heartbeat, but I'm getting too old. I cert, the other thing that I want to, I want to address is the whole issue of the legality of it. Now, I know that it's up for grabs as to whether or not if you vote down a part of the, a part of the budget, then you vote down the whole budget. And then you revert back to last year's budget, and you operate on 1/12 of that, month by month by month. You know, you're going to have to weigh your options. I don't, somebody can give me a, I haven't had opportunity to look at the difference between the budget this year and the budget last year. $1,100?
We disagree with that. We disagree with that. $104,000. Okay. Okay. We have some disagreement, but everybody will have a turn.
Okay, either way, there's a zero in there someplace. Either way, that's kind of a drop in the bucket when you think about the fact that you closed a school. You saved on Mr. Clancy's stipend for running that school, and it may not be the worst thing to operate on a 1/12 budget for a year if you get the opportunity to have his contract reopened and rethought. Just some cautions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, way in the back.
Thanks, Patty.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Debbie De La Brea. I live at 68 Church Street in Berniston, and I hear a lot of talk about his abilities and whether it's favorable or non-favorable, but I just want to clarify that what we're voting on is whether he be locked into a five-year contract, or if we can change that potentially to a two- to three-year contract. Is that, that's what we're voting on, correct?
That's the feeling, yes.
Okay. I hear a yes and a no.
Depends on how it's supported legally.
Okay, yes, that's what I mean.
You go, please.
Okay, sorry. But it sounds like it doesn't have to do whether he's doing a good job or not, that what we're voting on is whether he be locked into a five-year contract, or have an earlier review at a two- or three-year contract. Because of the past that we've had with Pioneer and the difficulties we had with passive attendants, I think a two- to three-year contract is really favorable in many ways.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yep.
Brian Keer, West Mountain Road, Berniston. What this lady just said is true. You would be locked into a five-year contract. We're trying to just get it reduced. There's never been a question about the ability of the superintendent, what he's doing for a job or not doing for a job. We've never questioned that. He's doing a fine job. We simply question the fact that we've just had to borrow $453,000 from the state of Massachusetts to bail us out, and we've locked ourselves into a five-year contract, and it precludes a lot of discussions with other school districts with which to share any type of a service. You pick the service. Nobody has ever mentioned on this board, or any other board that I'm aware of, that we're going to join Turnus Falls School District. Are we going to have discussions, possibly share services with them? Absolutely, if the vote tonight is successful, as our school committee is the only one that hasn't voted in favor of that yet. But it's not saying we're going to regionalize anything, and this, Article number one, would simply, our hope is to allow us to renegotiate that contract. As DESI stated in their letter, they asked him quite professionally to open his contract and do the right thing, and renegotiate a different number. So just to be clear, we have never once said he's not doing a good job.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, in the back.
I think that's the least of his problems.
Hi, Melissa Murphy, Shaw Road. I just have a question about if we all, if we vote to not raise and appropriate the money for the superintendent's salary. On Article number two, does that negate the 1/12 payment for the budget? So like if we're saying that we will approve the assessment of 2.947, then do we not go back to the 1/12?
Somebody want to field that one?
My understanding is that if three of the towns approve the amount that the school is asking for, then we will not have a 1/12 budget. If two of the towns do not approve what the school is asking for, we will start July 1 with a 1/12 budget, mostly because there's not time enough to turn around another vote. The school committee has 30 days, if the towns don't vote their budget, they have 30 days to come back with another proposal to us, and then we have 45 days to vote on that. Obviously, that's way past July 1st.
So is the finance committee recommending Article I?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we're going to, okay, yes, ma'am.
My concern is if the town does not vote and support Article I, that money will come out of Article number two, which will in turn decrease what's available for students directly. That's my concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Not true. We actually have deducted that amount from Article II? We've actually?
But it still has to be spent. That money would still have to be spent, so that you deducted it from Article II, which is the amount you're appropriating for the school. That money for the superintendent is still going to be spent, so it will come out of what we are appropriating. That will decrease services to the kids in the district.
Okay. Anybody else that wishes to be heard? On the front table. Yes, ma'am. Okay, you'll be next.
Beth Watrous, Brattleboro Road. I'm interested in hearing from the finance committee as to why they are not supporting article one.
Okay, finance committee member wish to respond?
I think, I think they have to--
Jane, if you could identify yourself for the--
Identify myself?
Well, just identify yourself.
Oh, identify myself.
You don't have to stand in the corner. Just identify yourself.
Jane Dutcher, Shaw Road, and chairman of your finance committee. We've spent many hours discussing this subject, and our primary reason for not wishing to approve what the school committee has done is just that. We feel that their action was not done with good business acumen. To give someone whom they have known at that time for six, at best, six months, a contract for five years just does not make any sense. Business 101 says, you know, know who you're giving the contract to, know whether they're capable. They could have given him a second review at the end of the year. They could have said after that first review, we will review you again before the budget has to be processed, and we will then decide what kind of a contract to give you. They could have given him one, two, or even three years at some lesser percent that was more in line with what the teachers got, and our finance committee probably would have accepted it. But we, the bottom line is, we just feel it's a very, very bad business decision. Any committee member want to add to that?
Okay. Okay, so in the second row.
Melissa Gary, 155 Parmenter Road. So there's nothing that I'm going to say that's going to change anyone's minds. Thank you for saying that it is financial. I'm here as a parent, and I'm concerned about my kid's education. I'm concerned about my property values. I'm concerned about younger families being attracted to move here and grow this community. That's what I'm here for, and that's what I care about. I'm really active within the school. I'm president of the PTO. If anyone wants to sign up, let me know. I enjoy it, but I also am really passionate about the education that my children get, and I cannot say that in the past three years that they have been provided with fully funded education. My kids are in very full classrooms with many needs. We're constantly finding out whether a pair is going to get pulled, teachers, classrooms being combined. If this continues to play out and it's all about who's in charge, whether it's the school committee or the finance board, or, I don't have a choice. My kids go to fourth grade one time. I'll leave. My kid's education is number one, and I wish that there would be some thought about what is going into the kids' education and what's missing, because this money that we're going to cut is going to come from somewhere, and the first people that we're going to do is we're going to cut people, because they're our biggest cost. And so we're going to have classrooms of 25, 26, 27, with kids with high behavioral needs and educational needs, and they're not going to get serviced. So thank you for saying it's all about financial. I'm here to say, I want my kids to have a thriving school, and I want this community to grow, because we moved here because of the close-knit community and what I thought was a school district who valued education. And what I'm hearing is cut, 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 and I'm not, you know, that's all I got to say. Yeah.
Okay, the lady on the fifth row, and then Mr. Nesta Powers, Kelly.
I'm Barbara Killeen. I live on Berniston Chapin Road. I'm a newly retired teacher from Pioneer, and I have just lived through probably the worst professional experience that you could as a teacher. It was our understanding at Pioneer that the school board gave John a five-year contract because they wanted things to settle down. They wanted to give him a chance to make the school, to give people a chance to relax, to sit back, to think about what education is all about, and for Pioneer to get a little bit more back to what it was. I think that they did this as a message to the finance committees, because the finance committees kept saying, you've got to cut back, you've got to make your budgets smaller, you've got to quit raising the price of education. And I think that instead of people going after the school system, I think what we really need to do is go to Boston and get them to pay for the things that they said that they were going to pay for and that they only pay 60% of now, or they pay 50 or 40 or 30, and they keep putting new mandates in, and those mandates are not funded except by the people who are in the towns. I taught at Pioneer for 13 years, excuse me, 14 years, and I have the distinction of saying that I have or had the lowest salary of anybody in the state. Now, if you're proud that the superintendent should be the lowest, think about all your teachers. Your teachers are now working for peanuts, and you get what you pay for. So I really think that instead of screaming at each other about, we're going to go over to Turner's, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, or yelling at the teachers because we want some kind of a small increase in pay, I really think that it's Boston that we need to go after. And I think you people should be out there lobbying and doing what you can, along with the representatives, Representative Mark and Comaford, they're getting after them, and they're finally beginning to be heard, but we need everybody yelling and screaming as opposed to one or two small voices in the distance. We're so far away from Boston, they don't pay any attention to us here, but you're right, we can't keep going the way we're going, but we can't cut back either, because these kids need to be educated as well as the kids that came before and as well as you were educated too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nesta Powers, since you've spoken already, I'd ask you to keep it brief. Just cover any new points you have.
Jane mentioned a few minutes ago, she asked if anyone on the finance committee wanted to add something, and I'd like to. Everyone is looking at this, or many people are looking at this as if we're cutting something. We're not cutting anything. What we are doing is trying to contain costs. We do not only support the school committee, we have long-term town employees who get 1% and 2% a year because the majority of our funding has to go to the schools. Is that fair? If we're going to pay the superintendent a larger share of the budget, yes, something has to be cut to pay for that. It's coming out of the, out of the systems, the school system's offerings to the students. I'm asking you to be rational. I'm asking you to really look and decide what, as a community, we can afford. It's not a matter of what we want or what we'd like. Our unit cost per student is escalating, and at some point, we're not going to be able to afford it. And Mom here is worried about--
Melissa.
Melissa, sorry. People not moving in or choicing out. Well, part of that reason is because our tax base is one of the highest in Franklin counties, and when people look to move into a community, one of the first things they look at is the tax base. And I'm asking you, please, to rationally think. Five years, DESI thought it was excessive, but when they found out that Mr. Skagel had hired his attorney, they backed off because they did not want a confrontation that would cost the four towns increased legal fees. So please, this is not about him or the office, it's about what's right. And one of the funny things, another thing that the finance committee had a big problem was that this contract doesn't cause for any review. There is absolutely no review. Next five years, he does not have to have a performance review. No one's ever heard of that, and like, I am also a retired teacher.
Okay, Mr. Killeen, again, if you wish to be heard.
No, I'm all set.
Okay, then ma'am, you get another--
Hi, my name is Kelly Gerton. I teach first grade here at BEES. I'm also a mother of three children here, and my husband and I just built a house in town. I think you have to remember that we are talking about cuts if we turn the budget down. I teach first grade, as I said, and I'm teaching our town of Berniston children how to read. I could not do my job without people like Mrs. Trill, who is my IA in the classroom and helps me so I can instruct children. I couldn't do the job without people like Mrs. Page, who volunteer to come and listen to kids. It is an all-hands-on-deck job. Our school is wonderful. We have an amazing staff, but we need the town's support to keep educating kids. And when you're saying that things aren't going to get cut, or it's going to be little children learning how to read that we're going to miss out on. Kids aren't going to make academic progress if we don't have the support we need.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. If you could come forward.
Jim Bell, Brattleboro Road. So, so you asked about the five-year contract, okay? So I have a phone number. Nobody at that table called me and said, hey, Jim, why five years? So we went through three horrendous years at Pioneer with the former administration. As Ms. Killeen so well put it, it was just really toxic, and we were losing good people. We found someone from within the building who understood what was going on. He was a young man with a lot of energy and a lot of ideas. The reason that he asked for a five-year contract is he said, I want to make a commitment to Pioneer. Simple as that. But what's going on now is you guys are angry at the school committee, you know, and we got to put that aside. We got to put that aside.
No, please, you're out of order. Wait, your turn, he's speaking now.
Yeah, yeah, we really do. We need to heal.
Okay, in the back.
My name is Amy Holder, and I live at 15 Pine Grove Drive. My husband and myself chose to move to Berniston because they have an incredible school system, and I have an amazing little boy who really loves the school. And I apologize that I'm getting choked up, but I'm an emotional basket case mama. And I guess what I'd like to say is, somebody just said that people look at moving and they look at the tax bracket. Well, I'll tell you, I'm a young mother, and these teachers here have taken on my child, who has a lot of needs, and they've taken him with open arms, and they've educated him. And I'll tell you, I'll pay whatever it takes to have a community of people who love my boy as much as I care about him. And I work long hours, and I don't look at the numbers, because I know that if I'm providing for my family, then these amazing people are providing for my child. My child hated going to school. For two years, he would lock me out of my vehicle in the morning. He open-endedly wanted to be at this school, and he's doing amazing. So I ask for you to really look at the fact that we have some really amazing kids that have a lot of needs, and I know that it's expensive, but our kids deserve the same education and the opportunities that I had, and my parents didn't have a pot to piss in or a window to throw it out of. And my husband and I have strived to be in a community of people that love the community, and that's why we live here. So I hope you really think about that, because our kids are the ones that are really lacking now.
Thank you. Just one last.
Hi, Debbie De La Brea, 68 Church Street in Berniston. Just two quick things I wanted to mention. There's 289 school districts in Massachusetts, and Pioneer is in the top 44 of per pupil expenditure. It wasn't even higher before. It surprises me that they can't pay their teachers when they're one of the highest-paid districts, one of the schools that pay the highest per pupil expenditure. So that's always been concerning to me. And two, again, on article one, we're only voting whether he should have a five-year contract or a two-, three-year contract. The five-year contract-- Oh, which article is that? Which article are we voting on, the five-year contract?
Number one.
Yeah, number one. So can, I'm confused, and I thought it was whether we have a five-year contract or not.
We're hoping that the five-year contract will be negated by this vote. Says to vote--
That's who I understand, yes. That's my understanding.
Raise and appropriate for the first year of a five-year contract.
Instead of potentially having a two- to three-year contract and revisiting it.
When we look at, yes. Present contract's a five-year contract.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
Does anybody have anything new they want to add, or we're going to go over the same thing? Yeah.
Brian Keer, West Mountain Road, just to respond to Mr. Bell. The reason you didn't get any phone calls from this board was because that decision for the five-year contract was made in executive session, and you're not supposed to be talking about why you made such a decision within executive session. That's why you received no calls from this board. Those notes have not been made public yet.
Okay, in the back? No, no, Mr. Killeen, no, behind you.
Frank Ribero, 8 Ho Shop Road. I'm on a fixed income, like just about everybody else in here is, whether you're working or not. Our salaries and our money hasn't really increased over the years because of our economic situation. Given that, though, we, every year, I come to town meetings, and it seems like no one's really ever advocating for the schools. You know, all you hear is, cut, we need to cut this, and yes, things are going up, price of business is going up, we know that, we have to pay more for everything. But the fact is, that's the way it is. And we cannot not afford to not, to fund education. We need to do that. If we don't fund education, we have other problems. We have more crime. I mean, we all know those kinds of stories that we hear. Education promotes democracy, which promotes understanding of the world we live in. We need to keep doing that for our children, and it starts here. It starts in small towns like Berniston. We need to do that year in and year out, and surely we need to be understanding of finances. We need to know that we can't spend more than we really can afford. But what is it that we can't afford? Think about it. Oh, yeah, taxes go up, but I haven't, the last few years, they haven't gone up that much. It's how we're spending our money in town. I keep railing against what the finance committee does here. They put money in savings instead of investing that money, investing it in education. We have money in this town, but we're not spending it on education. And in this situation, we have a reason, whoa, not to spend some money. We don't like the contract that's-- We don't like the contract that the school committee unanimously offered the individual. Oh, so now we're going to do some backdoor stuff. That may not even be legal, that ultimately, as I understand after reading a few things, that it might even cost the town of Berniston, in the long run, more money to pay for the school budget and end up paying for the superintendent's salary anyway. I guess we really need to fund education. Come on. Every year, it's cut, we need to find ways to cut. Back when I was the Finance Chair, must have been a dozen years ago, it was, the budget was skin and bones then. I can't imagine what it is now. So I would support, number one, funding this superintendent's salary, on number one. And number two, getting that budget, that number back to where what was requested by the school board or the school administration. Thank you.
Yeah, in the back, green shirt.
Hi, Tracy Sabalaski, Fox Hill Road. I want to start by saying that it's questionable whether or not the first article even matters, besides sending a message. So, it seems like we really want to send this message to the school committee, which three members are here, our members that we voted for. We want to send a message to the superintendent. How many people here have emailed the superintendent or the school committee members saying what we're saying today? We're really concerned about this five-year contract. You know, John Schedule could easily say, "I'll take a three-year contract." You know, "I want to kick my ass off to the district, but I'll cut back and I'll re-sign a contract for three years." So if we vote down, if we vote to not appropriate that money, I don't know if I'm saying it right. All we're doing probably is sending a message, which we could all do with an email. And then if the school budget, so if that doesn't go through, it pretty much guarantees a 1/12 budget for the schools, starting July 1st. And that may or may not affect our children's learning. You know, it's only like $1,000 difference between last year's budget and this year's budget, when you look at the numbers, if I'm looking at it right. So I feel like if you're, if we're going to fight this fight for our kids, we need to look at the right numbers. And the numbers that I'm concerned about, for my, I have two boys at Berniston. I love the teachers, I love the community, I love the school. I don't look at the tax rate. Yes, I have a job, so I'm not on a fixed income, but you know what? I don't get a great raise each year. I certainly don't get 5%. I usually don't get 3%. So I'm on a semi-fixed income, because my kids cost more each year, as you all know that happens. But what I look at is the number, now I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but when you look at what the district is spending on my child versus the other children in the district. My child at Berniston gets $8,000 spent on him in a school year. Someone else's child in Warwick, now I'm not picking on people, I'm just saying, their student gets $17,000 spent on that student. And that's why, when you look at per-student cost, it's really high in this district. It's not because our kids in Berniston are getting that money, it's because it's a district, and we're paying to keep so many schools open that are half-empty. Okay? I think the fight we should be fighting is at the school committee meetings. The budget's not set in stone. It's not complete. The teachers aren't guaranteed their positions until the end of this month. Okay? What I want to see, I want to know, are my kids going to have their instructional assistance in the classroom this year? That's not on here. We don't know. We don't know if that's for sure for another couple weeks. And in my kid's class, who has 23 students in the class, and half of them are on IEPs, how can one teacher teach all those kids? And, and my kid is getting $7,000, but their kid's getting $17,000. I don't understand that. And I don't think voting this budget in or out is going to do anything more for the kids, but I think we can collectively say, "Hey, we want to see cuts not made at Berniston. Why are we cutting? We're taking the Lyden kids. We're going to have the biggest elementary school in the district, and our kids are getting the least amount of money in the district, in this school, in your school, your grandchildren, your children, your neighbors' kids. They're getting the least amount of money. That's not fair." So I don't think the budget, I mean, I still don't know what I'm voting, but I think the message can be given differently than just voting this down and saying, "We're sending a message." No, you know what? Maybe we should vote it in, and then go to the school committee meeting, or email our school committee members and say, "Can you please give us some money for our children in our town that we're paying for? I don't want my tax dollars going to all the other kids. I want my tax dollars staying with my kids."
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, right here. See you later, Julie.
290 Brattleboro Road. So if this budget doesn't pass, you're not going to save $1,100, that's part of it, which is, all right, 1/12 budget, fine. 1/12 budget won't allow us to pay the regional retirement assessment in one lump sum, which is going to cost us, on 7-1, $8,800. The $8,800 with the $1,101 is roughly $9,900. The school committee worked hard with John Schedule and the Finance Director. We made $550,000 worth of cuts. Those were hard cuts. The IAs that the young lady was talking about, those are the tough cuts that shouldn't have had to have been made, but all we've heard from the Finance and Select Boards is "cut, cut, cut." I was told this afternoon, the excess deficiency was going to be roughly $250,000 expense surplus, is what we're looking at, after the numbers came in today. Negative revenue from the state is expected to be about $89,000. So in October, there's going to be roughly $160,000 to $190,000 that would be available. Now, that money was going to be used to reduce FY21's budget. So, with that being said, the school committee, the Finance Director and John Schedule could come back and use that money to reduce the assessments. But that's going to take until October to be verified, and then the state has to approve it. The budget numbers that you're looking at tonight have been approved by the state. So when somebody says, from the Finance or Select Board, that these numbers aren't accurate, well, then the state must be wrong. So, keep in mind, when you vote down the budget, it isn't only the $1,100 that you're not going to get to save, which is, really, isn't me to the picture here. It's everything from here on out, over 12 months. The retirement one is the biggest thing, buying school supplies that would be in bulk, you name it. Anything that can be bought in bulk is not going to happen, so that's going to cost us more. So you're looking at spending more money. We're trying to save money by making, you know, making cuts that we don't want to make, and now we're going to turn around and vote down a budget and then just waste money. It absolutely makes no sense to waste money. So please, vote for this budget.
Maybe Mr. Kline?
Yeah, hi. Just as I listen to this, it kind of boils down to a simple proposition, really, if you're very objective about it. You've had a contract negotiated by the two legal entities entering into it, the superintendent on one hand, and the school committee on the other. You have, you have an agreement. What this does is it doesn't fund it. So what does that suggest to you guys is going to happen, really?
We hope that the superintendent will sit down and renegotiate his contract. That's what we hope.
Okay, sir, in the back?
Wait a minute, we got to have a chance.
Do you want to run the meeting, Mr. Ness and Power?
No.
This gentleman would like to speak.
Yep.
Well, they'll have their turn. Go ahead.
Thank you. Ron Fulton, Fox Hill Road, Berniston. I'm going to ask a stupid question. I've been listening to all the wonderful things that the PTO woman had said, the teachers, the parents, who are committed to having the school be as good as it can possibly be. I'm sure that everybody here agrees spiritually with that objective. What I'm confused about is what does this $47,000 mean? I mean, what are we voting for and what are we voting against? It seems to me like there's some kind of hidden agenda here that's behind or beneath the $47,000 that is much more significant than the number itself. So if we're asked to vote up or down on this Article One, is it really the $47,000, or is it the contract? So why doesn't the Article One say that? Why aren't we told what we're really voting about? So I apologize for sounding stupid, but I am confused, and I'd like it to be just clarified a little bit more. What are we really voting about on Article One? Thank you.
Okay, wishes to be heard.
I don't know that we could have made Article One any clearer, but I'll try. Jane Dutcher, Shaw Road. It states specifically that the $47,282.40 is to, is the Berniston's assessment for the first year of a five-year contract. And we've told you that we object to the five-year contract. So I'm not sure what other clarification you want. I have a couple questions for Mike Townsley, while I've got the microphone. And I don't intend to give it up. So, Michael explained to you that they would lose money by not being able to pay the retirement fund assessment on July 1st. So my question is this. The towns are required to make their first payment on the annual school budget on August So they must have money in the bank to pay the retirement fund on July 1, or else they wouldn't be paying it till July, till August 15th, anyway. So I miss the sense of that argument. The money must be in the bank now for that payment, otherwise, they're not going to make it. Doesn't have anything to do with whether we pass the budget or not. Thank you.
Okay, the one in the back?
Justin Duncan, 415 Fox Hill Road. I've been at that table, and I taught at Pioneer for 30 years, and I retired. I'm alive. What I, question I have is the $47,282.40. Now, what does it say that you take that out of the budget with the intent, with the intent of doing the contract of the superintendent? But what if the school committee just says, "Fine, we'll take the $47,000 from someplace else in the budget, and pay the superintendent, and we'll cut somebody, we'll cut four or five aides, they'll take care of it." Is that, is that your intent?
No.
Is that what's going to happen?
Of course it's not. I have four grandsons in this district. If you think that, you are crazy. I am an educator myself. I taught 37 years at Maro Regional, and I stand for education. And I can tell you right now that money is not being spent properly.
It just seems to me that what you're doing is cutting $47,000 out of the budget, and the school district has to pay for that somehow.
If it's voted that way, yes. Hopefully, the superintendent will come to the table. Warwick has gone to-
Why didn't you put in the issue?
We, we did put it, it was plain as we could.
Said, "Come to the table." I don't see that.
He has refused.
Okay, yeah, okay, and then, okay.
When Mike talked about cutting five-
No, you'll have it, no, you'll have it, please. That's a point of order, okay.
When Mike Townsley brought up cutting 500-some thousand from the budget, your original proposed budget was supposed to be up $706,000. Now, if you guys are all for spending this kind of money, what you need to do is come to the school committee meeting and say, "We want this $706,000 spent." He's talking about cutting 500-some thousand of that $706,000. The $1,000 isn't an accurate figure. The budget is only up $1,000, but the assessments to the towns are up $104,000. If it was only up $1,000, and we were just trying to pay $100 here and $400 there, wouldn't be any question. The assessments to the towns are up $104,000, and Mike Townsley going like this.
Yes, we made the $550,000 in cuts. The district, the school committee, John Schedule, the Finance Director, did their job. The problem is, the revenues from the state, as one person spoke about early, is where the problem is. The school committee has done their job, John has done his job, you guys have even done your job. The state is not funding the education of the kids in this state. It's not just us.
We've argued, you know, just like you've argued. We've talked to our guys.
And I understand. So, I think we're beating ourselves up, we're beating the superintendent up. We need to pass this budget and let the superintendent work on making the efficiencies, as have been discussed at the school committee meetings. We're trying to move forward in providing a better education, and trying not to cut our aides that are helping our special needs kids, the help, the people that come in and help, you know, to do the reading. Now, one thing I don't like is the reference to special needs. We had to hire people for special needs, but I don't like putting that burden on that parent that has a special need, thinking that the reason our budget is being affected is because of special needs. That is not the way to do it. Bottom line is the way to do it. And the bottom line is, the district, school committee, Select Board, Finance, the superintendent, we've done our job. It's the state that hasn't kept their end of the bargain. They haven't paid out their percentages of what they were going to pay for transportation. You know, I've got the numbers right here, what, what, in fact, Chapter 70 revenue increase, $13,760, big deal. Transportation revenue decreased $111,504. Charter school reimbursement increased $19,233. We pay $400-something thousand to a charter school. Tuition fee increases of $24,000, which is from our neighboring community in Vernon. Interest income decrease of $500. All of these increases, decreases, net out to decrease of $103,392. Add in a slight increase of expenditure budget of $1101. It nets to an increased overall assessment to the four-member towns of $104,492. We know that. We know that, but it's-
You're saying to everybody, it's only $1,000 difference. It isn't.
The school committee has done their job. The fight needs to be taken to the state. I'll go with you.
Talking about years from now, Mike, you know that.
We're dealing with this budget here. We're trying to get through this budget so we can create efficiencies to get, we're moving forward.
Okay, there are other people that wish, yes, sir. Thank you. Is my area called a question? Okay, we're going to put it to a vote now. We're going to start out with a voice vote. And I would ask that, don't try to get it, don't try to get into a screaming match so that you sound louder, because if seven, if seven people request that we count heads, we're going to, so. we're going to, so save us all some time. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
We're voting on the motion. Voting on the Warren article. Okay, we'll do it again. We're calling the question. This is the article, Article One. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $47,282.40 to the Pioneer Valley Regional School District physical year 20 assessment for the first year of a five-year contract for the superintendent of schools. So a vote yes is a vote in favor of that appropriation. A vote no is a vote against it. So I'll ask again, all in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna count heads. So I'm gonna ask first, everybody who says votes in the affirmative to stand and wait until you're counted. If you can't stand, raise your hand, please, when the time comes. This is yes, right? Yes. This is in favor.
This is yes.
I don't know if we can. There's half a lot of people sitting.
You have the, a couple people in wheelchairs who can't stand. Okay. Sitting this one out. Okay. You got it?
Yep.
Okay, now, everybody who's voting against it, please stand. Yeah. Hmm?
I hope they count themselves. Too loud, do you know?
Hey, Paul?
Make sure the two girls that don't count, count themselves one way or the other.
Good point.
Did you get the lady in the wheelchair?
Yeah.
Did you get yourself?
Yes.
Not yet.
Are you walking down?
I'm not voting. Yes. Unless there's a tie.
Unless it's a tie, there you go.
No, it's, just think of me as Mike Townsley.
There you go.
They told everybody.
You're gonna make this motion.
Uh?
I wonder if you're getting attached from the other towns.
No, I got, I got nothing.
Thank you very much for being so patient and orderly. The process really matters.
Okay, with respect to Article One, the vote is in favor 47. Opposed 57. Therefore, the article fails. Okay, proceeding to Article Two. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $2,947,599.60 for Berniston's share of the PVRS operating budget, or take any vote or votes in relation thereto. Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer an amendment. Jane Dutcher, Shaw Road.
Okay. And what is your amendment?
I move to amend Article Two to raise and appropriate $2,944,151 for Berniston's share of the PVRS operating budget.
Second.
Okay, so with respect to the, with respect to the motion to amend at this point only, we have a motion to amend the figure to $2,944,151. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and that motion's been made and seconded. So anybody wish to discuss the motion to amend? Yes, sir?
I'm just curious, does that mean, that's a no vote on that amendment?
Right.
You're taking it out, so you're not voting on that. You're voting on what you said. Even if we amend it, that's the article, so it's a no vote. Isn't it?
Correct.
Thank you.
The motion is to reflect savings to the four towns of the full savings of closing Lydon, rather than the $47,000 that the school committee allowed.
Okay, so again, with respect to the motion to amend, is there anybody else that wishes to be heard with respect to the motion to amend?
We have this on the floor in Norfield and the floor in Warwick. What we hope is that it gets voted in, in those two towns as well, and the school committee will have a budget from which to start. There's three budgets that vote the same. Their fair share. You say, oh, it's voting down the budget. It is. But the school committee has 30 days to come back to us. If they're willing to accept this, great. If not, they're gonna produce a new budget for us.
Okay. Anybody else wish to be heard on the motion to amend? Okay, seen, and anybody else? Okay, so now, we'll put it to a vote. This is only on the motion to amend to $2,944,151. After that, we will then discuss, or have the opportunity for discussion of the, of the motion that's on the floor, either that figure or the previous figure, depending on the motion to amend. So all in, yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I'm still a little confused. I can't believe I'm the only one who answered this.
You wanna put that to a vote? Okay.
If we vote your amendment, Ms. Dutcher?
Yes.
Then that in effect means that we are voting no on Article Two. Will there be another vote to say we vote no on Article Two?
Yes. This is just the motion to amend right now.
This is just a-
So we'll vote on the amendment, and then we'll go back to this article, but it's already-
Well, once, once we, if we approve the amendment, then, then the article will be the number that I just said to you. Okay?
Okay, I think, where did that, where did this number come from? It's on-
It, do you have this sheet?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. It is, it is, it is taking the rest of the savings from closing Lydon and applying it to the towns' assessments.
Okay. Okay, way in the back?
Um, so what we're voting right now is to take any savings from Lydon, which they decided to close to put more money in the budget to spend on the children. We're gonna take that money-
No.
And then we each get a little bit in our tax dollars. Yeah. So instead of funding the stuff that needs to be funded, which is the reason that we're closing the school, we're closing a whole school, all those town members and all that are losing their school.
Why?
To give everybody in the district a better district. And we're saying, no, we want, we wanna keep that money in our pockets, even though it's probably barely any money per person. So just so you know what you're voting on right now, the money that was supposed to go to the kids, now you're taking back.
Yes, sir. On the, this is on the motion to amend, correct?
Correct.
The, to amend the budget, as they're doing, doesn't really matter. The budget is an up or down vote. And if the budget doesn't pass, we're gonna be going to a 1/12 budget, plain and simple.
Okay, anything else on the motion to amend? Yes, Ms. Dutcher?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Jane Dutcher, Shaw Road. If we approve this amendment, and subsequently this question, the school committee has the option of accepting these numbers as their budget and sending it back to us as the budget. They don't have to come back with the same number that they've come back with already one time. They can have a discussion about it, and they can meet us halfway. They haven't tried to meet us at all. Thank you.
Okay. On the motion, on the motion to amend, any further discussion? Okay, there being none. All in favor of the motion to amend, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I take it as the ayes have it. If people dispute that, then we'll have another head count. Okay, we'll count them, count heads again. Yeah. Okay, so all, everybody who's in favor of the motion to amend, please stand until you've been told to sit down.
The amendment.
We make any gains by getting the first one passed?
Yeah.
So, I'm confused the hell out of them.
Come on, guys, stand up.
I'm very stubborn.
Yeah, just like me.
It's tied to not having any money.
Yeah, we got it. This is the matter.
The voices sounded good.
Huh?
The voices sounded good. I don't think we got enough standing on them.
We're not gonna make any gains.
Don't count me, Chris.
You got the voices in wheelchairs?
You have the, a couple people in wheelchairs who can't stand. Okay. Sitting this one out. Okay. You got it?
Okay, now, everybody who's voting against it, please stand.
[inaudible]
Yeah.
Hmm?
Don't count me, Chris.
Yeah.
One finger or two fingers.
Okay, everybody who's opposed to the motion to amend, please stand.
You're taking it out, so you're not voting on that. You're voting on what you said. Even if we amend it, that's the article, so it's a no vote. Isn't it?
Correct.
Thank you.
The motion is to reflect savings to the four towns of the full savings of closing Lydon, rather than the forty-seven thousand that the school committee allowed.
Okay, so again, with respect to the motion to amend, is there anybody else that wishes to be heard with respect to the motion to amend?
We have this on the floor in Norfield and the floor in Warwick. What we hope is that it gets voted in, in those two towns as well, and the school committee will have a budget from which to start. There's three budgets that vote the same. They're fair share. You say, oh, it's voting down the budget. It is, but the school committee has thirty days to come back to us. If they're willing to accept this, great. If not, they're gonna produce a new budget for us.
Okay, anybody else wish to be heard on the motion to amend? Okay, seen, and anybody else? Okay, so now we'll put it to a vote. This is only on the motion to amend to two million nine hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. After that, we will then discuss or have the opportunity for discussion of the of the motion that's on the floor, either that figure or the previous figure, depending on the motion to amend. So, all in, yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I'm still confused. I can't believe I'm the only one who answered this.
You wanna put that to a vote? Okay.
If we vote your amendment, Ms. Dutcher.
Yes.
Then that in effect means that we are voting no on Article Two. Will there be another vote to say we vote no on Article Two?
Yeah.
This is just the motion to amend right now.
This is just a-
So, we'll vote on the amendment, and then we'll go back to this article, but it's already-
Well, once we've, if we approve the amendment, then, then the article will be the number that I just said to you. Okay?
Okay, I think, where did this number come from? It's on-
Do you have this sheet?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. It is, it is, it is taking the rest of the savings from closing Lydon and applying it to the town's assessments.
Okay, okay, way in the back?
So, what we're voting right now is to take any savings from Lydon, which they decided to close to put more money in the budget to spend on the children. We're gonna take that money-
No.
And then we each get a little bit in our tax dollars. Yeah, so instead of funding the stuff that needs to be funded, which is the reason that we're closing the school, we're closing a whole school, all those town members and all that are losing their school-
Why?
To give everybody in the district a better district. And we're saying, no, we want, we wanna keep that money in our pockets, even though it's probably barely any money per person. So, just so you know what you're voting on right now, the money that was supposed to go to the kids, now you're taking back.
Yes, sir, on the, this is on the motion to amend, correct?
The, to amend the budget, as they're doing, doesn't really matter. The budget is an up or down vote. And if the budget doesn't pass, we're gonna be going to a one-twelfth budget. Plain and simple.
Okay, anything else on the motion to amend? Yes, Ms. Dutcher?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jane Dutcher Shaw Road. If we approve this amendment and subsequently this question, the school committee has the option of accepting these numbers as their budget and sending it back to us as the budget. They don't have to come back with the same number that they've come back with already one time. They can have a discussion about it, and they can meet us halfway. They haven't tried to meet us at all. Thank you.
Okay, on the motion, on the motion to amend, any further discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor of the motion to amend, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I take it as the ayes have it. If people dispute that, then we'll have another head count. Okay, we'll count them, count heads again. Yeah, okay, so all, everybody who's in favor of the motion to amend, please stand until you've been told to sit down.
The amendment.
Come on, guys, stand up.
Yeah, just like me.
It's tired of not having any money.
Yeah, we got it.
This is the matter.
The voices sounded good. The voices sounded good. I don't think we got enough standing on here.
One finger or two fingers? Okay, everybody who's opposed to the motion to amend, please stand.
The no is out of it?
No, it looks like more than one. I don't think anybody knows.
They said that it's totally recommended.
Did, did they have you do that, or?
I don't think it's true.
But it does raise the questions for me, that I'm not particularly good at judging ayes and nays, 'cause you have to do all of them, but it's like- Which, Article One? Oh, yeah, she and I talked, I mean, I- But it's not for me to say. No, but I mean, as the moderator, I'm not supposed to involve myself.
All we needed was one more town. I don't think we shot it down.
Yeah, because this, this plus the original amount was what they requested.
What is the school's amount?
Would've been this amount plus that amount. Now, the only thing could be a problem is if the amended amount doesn't go and they amend it up. Add those two together. Hopefully, they're not that smart.
I feel like they're gonna do it unless-
I don't think they, they meant to pass it.
Oh, the amendment didn't pass. But now they're gonna amend, they're gonna amend it up.
At this point, I'm all right with that.
Yep. Okay, with respect to the, to the, respect to the motion to amend Article Two, there were forty-seven votes in favor of the motion to amend, fifty-one against, so the motion fails. So now we're back to considering the original form of Article Two to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of two million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents. Yeah.
Proceededly, just want you to know that, except for your visibility, the accuracy of this count, two people counting separately and checking, is as accurate and much quicker, as slow as it seemed, than a secret ballot. Just, I want you to know that.
There are no hanging chads. Okay. Okay, so the motion, the original Article Two, was moved and seconded. So, we're back to, we're back to that motion. Any further discussion in the back?
Frank Rubiro, Aid Ho Shop. The, the number of two million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand five ninety-nine and sixty cents, that's not the number that the school requested. That's minus the superintendent's share. Okay. Considering the last vote, I wanted to make an amendment to increase this number of two million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents by the forty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents in Article One.
So what, what's-
To make that two million nine nine four eight eight two.
People just voted that down. They just voted that down.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Oh, the forty-seven thousand one?
Briefly, yeah. Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
There, because the margin is so small here, there might be some people who have had some second thoughts, I hope, that with all the maneuvering that's going on here, which a lot of us are unaware of, as one gentleman alluded to, we need to fund education. And here is the budget of the new, the new number that I've amended or trying to amend. That's the budget that the school needs to operate with. We need to vote that in. Thank you.
I would like to ask, is it-
You're gonna have to speak up.
Okay, I'd like to ask Mr. Townsley.
Maybe go through him.
Yeah, well, what, yeah, but what, you gotta, you gotta speak up so we can all hear you.
Okay, I would like to know how many students there are in the middle school currently and how many students are in grades nine through twelve.
Currently?
Currently.
That, I didn't bring those numbers with me. I was voting on the budget tonight, not the student population.
Do you have an estimate in your head, your best estimate? Or does anybody else here know?
There's two others.
Probably, I would guess, maybe five hundred, roughly.
I'm thinking it's between three and four, maybe?
In all the schools, or just-
No, no, just the high school and the middle school, and the middle school.
You're probably, roughly forty-five kids a grade, so multiply that by how many classes are up there, roughly.
Okay, my, my thinking-
Just average forty-five kids per grade, and that would give you a rough guess.
So, what was the, I don't wanna have to do the math. Okay. Okay, my question is-
Okay, if we, if we could have order, it's hard, it's hard enough to get it without people talking.
Total, middle school and why do, why does the school need ed-inist students? Couldn't there be a teacher in charge for middle school and a teacher in charge of the high school? Why do you think you have to cut aides in order to come up with a budget? I thought her name was still in the staff. No.
No, you can't, can't discuss staff.
Yeah, this is for, this is a chance for you to speak. It's not like a conversation.
Question and answer, okay.
You can make a point, and then somebody else can try to respond to it.
I, I was just thinking myself as well that special ed kids, they're mandated to have aides on most IEPs, so that won't be cut. So, I think there are a lot of things that should be considered. That's, that's all.
Okay. Okay, sir?
I know you're wrong, but years ago, you couldn't raise the amount that was posted in the warrant. You can lower it, but you cannot raise it.
Now, now, the, the law in Massachusetts is now that you, you can raise it within certain modest parameters. If, if they came up with four million dollars, you'd be right, but to raise it by forty-seven thousand dollars, there's adequate notice. Yeah, in the back.
Ron Fulton, Fox Hill, I'll be brief. Since the hidden agenda of Article One, by voting down the forty-seven thousand dollars was to get at the idea of negating the five-year contract, by adding the forty-seven thousand dollars to Article Two, now that we voted it down in Article One, are we still negating the five-year contract? If we include the forty-seven thousand dollars in Article Two? Does Article One still have that effect? So, to add it to Article Two is to defeat the defeat of Article One. Is that correct? Thank you.
Who knows? Okay, anybody else?
Good evening, I'm Mark Fitzpatrick, Chapin Road. I think it's just terribly unfortunate we're having the discussions we are tonight, because what it boils down to is if the hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars got returned back to the towns, and if the school committee didn't grant a five-year contract, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We spent three years with egregious mismanagement up at that school to the point to where the legislature had to bail us out, and that's been ignored. I voted for new people on the school committee to stand their ground and have some common sense, and that has not been portrayed in this, in this budget. And there isn't anybody in this room that does not support the elementary or the piney school district, but because of what the elementary school, because of what the school committee did, we're divided. And our only voice is to try to undermine what they did, 'cause it's not, 'cause it was not rational, what they did. They hid behind executive session to give a five-year contract, and they gave forty-six thousand dollars back of a hundred and eighty-eight. What are you gonna do when Warwick is gonna go, go to the moon? What are you gonna do with those savings? The school committee representatives for this town is representative of the constituents as well as the school. You know, there's no transparency, and there should be, there has to be. And, and everybody is upset with everybody because of what the school committee did and never should have, and nobody stood up and, and stopped it. And I voted for people to do that, and it did not happen. Thank you.
I just wanna make it clear before we go further where we're standing on this. Right, right now, we're on a motion. We're on a motion to amend. The original figure was two million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents. There is a motion right now to change that figure to two million nine hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-two. We haven't voted that that's the figure yet. So, perhaps before we get into, you know, a lot of philosophical discussions about, about where you wanna fund education, you have to decide what the, what the article is that we're going to be considering. So, I'm gonna call, yes? Well, I was just gonna say. So, we're, we're gonna have, we're gonna, we're gonna have a vote on the motion to amend, and I'm not gonna even waste my time this time asking for a voice vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
I don't think there was a second.
There was, there was.
There was.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a second from over here. Yeah. We had, there's a motion in a second, so we're gonna, we're gonna call the question of the motion to amend only. So, all in favor of the motion to amend, please stand. Between those two votes, only six people voted. Yeah. Well, of course, in that vote, it was only four votes, so you're right. Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, especially since, I mean, nobody really knows what Article One was about, if it was really about five years versus three, or is the figure, that's the problem. It's a compound question. Okay, we ready?
You got forty-four. You got forty-four?
Yeah, I mean- Remember, call the question, do I have to have a vote on that, or just?
Happiest owner there is.
She gave it the vote.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good one.
It's going to be close, guys. It's going to be close.
Okay, with respect to the second motion to amend Article Two, there are 40 votes in favor and 58 votes opposed. Therefore, the second motion to amend also fails. And we're back with the original... The original question of $2,947,599.60. We've had a motion to amend to make it lower, a motion to amend to make it higher. Both have failed. So that might suggest that maybe we ought to vote on the question. Okay, so... We're going to stand again. All in favor of Article Two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $2,947,599.60 for Berniston's share of the PVRS operating budget, please stand now. No, no. You've got to have your counters. Okay. Okay, for now, all please sit down, and everybody who's opposed, please stand. Okay. I declare the vote to be self-evident, and Article Two passes. Okay. Article Three, to see if the town of Berniston will vote to create a regional school district planning committee in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 14. Or take... oh, or take any voter votes in relation thereto.
So moved.
Okay, it's moved in second. Any discussion? Yes? Oh, don't worry.
Judy Crumel from West Mountain Road, I would just like a description from somebody about what they think this planning commission is going to do.
May I? Oh, Brian, good.
Go ahead, Brian. Go ahead, Brian.
Brian Keer, West Mountain Road. There are several towns, the four towns in the Pioneer District. Select boards have all voted in support of forming this committee. The town of Gill, the town of Montague...
You've got to speak up a bit.
The town of Gill and the town of Montague, select boards have also voted to support this article. The Montague School Committee has voted to support this article. The Pioneer Valley Regional School District School Committee could put it on their agenda, which they have not done yet, and we've asked them twice, put it on their agenda. The legislative process allows town meeting votes. If three of the four towns pass it, will allow us to form a committee to look at ways to save money, whether it's sharing services, joining with another district, who knows? Yes, and the way the committee is supposed to be made up is a select board member, a school committee member, and a member-at-large from the town, from each of those towns. And it's not excluding anybody. Other towns could vote to join this committee, whether it's the Mohawk District towns, the town of Irving, Orange, it could be anywhere. Everybody keeps saying it's Turners. We're trying to combine with Turners. They're just two that know they need to start saving money in other ways, too. So they want to join this committee to look at ways to join services. That's all this is about.
Okay, anybody else? Yes?
Melissa Gary, Parmenter Road. I love that everyone voted tonight and was passionate. I welcome you to come to school committee meetings, and maybe a lot of your questions that you had tonight would have been answered. So as we move forward, whether we vote to have a committee or not, school committee meetings are streamed live, online, if you do that. But it'd be really nice to see more people in the audience of school committees. So if we're so passionate about what we're doing with our tax dollars and where those tax dollars are going, join us at the school committee meetings. That's where you can ask a lot of these questions and maybe prevent all the tension that we're feeling tonight. I see the select board members and the finance committee at the meetings every single month. So I just want to put that out there and just put an invite. Come join us at school committee meetings and get your questions answered there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody, we'll call the question at this point, Article Three, to see if the town of Berniston will vote to create a regional school district planning committee in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 14. So we're going to see if there's still any fight in you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed?
No!
Ayes have it. Okay. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $20,500 to have a full interconnection application prepared and submitted for a 2,665-kilowatt, plus or minus, solar installation at the town landfill, or take any voter votes in relation thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? Yes?
Non-tech person, what is this?
Yes?
Brian Keer, West Mountain Road. The town received a Meda grant recently to do a feasibility study on potentially putting a solar installation on the capped landfill in Berniston.
Okay.
That study was completed. There were several recommendations done in it. There's a document that's been prepared that you can find at the town hall. The next phase of this would be to create a one-line diagram by a professional engineer, which is an $8,500 cost, and to apply to Eversource for an interconnection agreement. There's a $12,000 fee to do that. This doesn't mean it's definitely going to happen. It's our next step to get in line for funding based on what the kickbacks would be from the utilities to put this installation in.
Thank you.
If the installation goes in as a 2.6-megawatt, 2,600-kilowatt facility, the potential returns, as listed in here conservatively, are figured at $530,000 annually to the town of Berniston if we decide to own it ourselves. So it's a significant amount of money. There is a $3.5-million cost to install it. But everybody can do the math on that. You're looking at a six-to-seven-year payback, and you're looking at a 25-to-30-year life expectancy of a landfill solar field. So we feel it's money well spent. This $20,500, it gets us in the queue. It gets the engineering one-line diagram done. Eversource will look at it and decide if we need to pay for any upgrades to the existing utilities, and it will potentially put us in line for our fixed funding. I'll call them kickbacks, but on top of the $530,000 is just from what's now called the SMART program. That does not include any savings we could reap from not having to pay potential utility bills on town buildings, the schools, other places. That could be in addition to that $530,000.
Stan Garland, 96... 95 Hillcrest Drive. Don't even know where I live now.
It's been a long meeting.
Just want to remind you, we've been dealing with this potential of putting solar on a landfill for many years. The last time I was on the select board, we had a company that came in and was going to do it, and they went bankrupt. It's really a great idea, and if we can make this happen, like Brian just said, we're going to see a significant amount of money coming back into the town every year, which would help our finances, which we are trying to do to get more revenue coming into the town. So hopefully, you'll stand by us on this one and let us go forward. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion, questions? See none, therefore call the question, Article Four, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the amount of $20,500 for a full interconnection application prepared and submitted. All in favor?
Aye!
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to adopt the resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts, as noted separately. This is by petition. So is there a motion with respect to this article? Okay, moved in second. Discussion. Is there anybody here who can perhaps describe this for us?
I'm Sheila Domkayler. I live at 780 Brattleboro Road, and I sponsored this petition. I'm going to just speak very briefly, and someone else will follow me to speak about the merits of the actual resolution. But I know if some of you were at the annual town meeting, you might be saying, "I thought we already voted on this, and why are we voting on it again?" So at that town meeting, indeed, we did vote on it. It did not pass. And I, the following day and several days after that, I heard from a number of people who had really wished that there had been some more conversation about it, who wished that we had had a standing vote, who wished that we would really... that the town could take a closer look at the resolution. So we found out that to bring something to a special town meeting, we had to have 100 registered Berniston voters, and we had a handful of days to do that. So it seemed pretty daunting, but indeed, there were 102 people in the town voters who wanted to see this brought back to town meeting. So I encourage you to listen thoughtfully to the following speaker or speakers and to join me in supporting this resolution. Thank you. Thank you for staying.
Ron Fulton, Fox Hill. It's me again. I have here... I have the honor of having here a letter from our state Senator Joe Commerford. And she has asked me if I'd be nice enough to read it on her behalf. So I could, in the interest of saving time, paraphrase it, but I will not presume to do so. So please allow me just to read it as she wrote it. Thank you. Thank you to the town of Berniston... Let me start over. "Thank you to the Berniston Town Meeting for giving me the opportunity to speak to you in support of the resolution you're considering this evening regarding the Massachusetts State Seal. Thank you to Ron Fulton for reading this statement in my absence. As you know, the Massachusetts Seal features a white hand..." I handed this out earlier. You can look at the handout that shows it. "As you know, the Massachusetts State Seal features a white hand holding a colonial broadsword over the head of a Native American man, with a Latin motto beneath, commonly translated, 'By the sword we bring peace.'" "This is the image our state holds up to the nation as the symbol that best represents us. With regard to the people who live within our Commonwealth's borders, we know that the state flag is placed prominently on auditorium stages in all of our public schools, where both Native American children and children of all races must grapple with it. Every voter guide, every state police vehicle, every official letter from state bureaucrats, like me, to their constituents bears this symbol," and on and on. "I have been in many gatherings where people have pointed fingers to our neighbors in the South and their Confederate symbols, and yet we in Massachusetts carry a symbol that embodies the subjugation of Native Americans through violence." "Resolutions in support of changing the state flag and seal filed in the Senate by Jason Lewis, which I co-sponsored, have been approved already in 20 of the 24 cities and towns in my Senate district, including Amherst, Colrain, Irving, Gill, Greenfield, Hadley, Leverett, Leiden, Montague, Northfield, Pelham, Royalston, Shutebury, Sunderland, New Salem, Northampton, Orange, Warwick, Whately, and Wendell. And momentum is growing in the State House, with nearly 40 state legislators now co-sponsoring House Bill 2776 and Senate Bill 1877, a resolve to establish a special commission relative to the seal and motto of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This is an issue about which I care deeply, with personal roots for me going back to my days as an organizer with the American Friends Service Committee and a statewide walk I helped organize in partnership with the Leverett Peace Pagoda. Symbols have weight. They have meaning. They have power. Next year, 2020, is the 400th anniversary of the Pilgrim Landing, when the Wampanoag first welcomed European settlers to these shores and helped them to survive the first harsh winters on their lands. As we approach this important anniversary, we have the opportunity to consider and tell the truth about our history and come together as one to say, 'It is time to change the Massachusetts flag and seal and create a new official state symbol that reflects the mutual respect and connection we want between all people who share the Commonwealth today.' In the common awareness of the truths of our past, in the hope of peace and justice in the years to come, we must account for the message conveyed by the official symbols of our state and create a symbol that represents our best selves and the values of our state. Even though I already support this legislation, should you choose to pass it, your vote will be a powerful mandate I can share proudly with the House and Senate colleagues and the leadership as a profound call to action and accountability." Thank you.
The purpose of the commission is to decide that. It's unknown at this point. Now, if you notice, personal aside here, okay? This broadsword that you see at the top of the shield is actually drawn to be a representative of the sword of Miles Standish, of whom I happen to be a descendant. So on his behalf, I will recommend that we retire it. Thank you. I think specifically Article Five, as was presented, to see if the town will vote to adopt the resolution. So if you look at the resolution, the actual language that you would be voting on is the last paragraph. "Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Berniston hereby adopts this resolution in support of House 2776 and Senate 1877, quote, 'A resolve providing for the creation of a special commission relative to the seal and motto of the Commonwealth,' close quotes, and requests that Representative Paul Mark and Senator Joe Commerford continue their strong advocacy and support for the aforementioned resolve in the General Court, and that the Joint Committee on State Administration Regulatory Oversight, after holding a public hearing on the resolve, reported out favorably, and if the legislation shall pass, that the governor shall sign it and work with members of the General Court to ensure its enactment." That's the language that you are being asked to vote for. So is there any further discussion relative to that? I see none, so therefore we'll call the question on the resolution that I just read. All in favor?
Aye!
All opposed?
No!
I take it the ayes have it. If anybody wishes to challenge that, we'll have a... we'll count heads, but otherwise, the ayes have it. Okay. Okay, it's passed. Okay. Okay, so moved. Thanks, Mike.